Councilmember Von Runberg. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims is...
Be back five minutes.
Councilmember Pataglio.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I was gonna do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I have to read the statement. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at Sec. Notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Ted Ehrenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning to invited guests and staff. It's amazing what free coffee and free donuts will bring people out at eight o'clock in the morning. Free! They're over there, they're waiting for you. So, it's a beautiful thing that all you folks were here to show up this morning. Before I start the presentation, I want to thank the staff of the city of Hackensack. They do an immeasurable job. It's not easy some days. It has its moments, we all know that. But, we are progressing. And that's the important thing. I'm very interested in setting goals. Because, life is about races, a start and a stop. And a goal without a plan is just a dream. I heard that the other day and I thought it was very good. So, what I'm trying to do is to focus and harness the energy that the city provides from our residents, from our staff, from the direction that comes from our mayor and council. I've used this format in prior service to other communities. And I have to say, it's a little clumsy in the beginning that people don't quite understand what this is trying to do. But, it really does start to propel these communities and show a sense of accomplishment. By doing this, we also become very transparent. Because no one is going to get up to this microphone going forward to say that they didn't know or there wasn't any discussion or there was no record or wasn't any public comments. All that nonsense is going to end. Because this way, this is recorded. It will be memorialized. We will have a record of it. All the documentation could be accessed through the PowerPoint that Albert, Jan, and Jackie Stout worked very hard to put together. That'll be presented today. And that way, we can use that PowerPoint as our outline for our goals in 2018. So, I'm going to respectfully ask you folks to indulge me. I'm going to have to turn my back on you because I have to read these slides. And then, we're going to go through this. So, my plan with this program today is to go through the PowerPoint part. Obviously, I'm going to call upon, I don't know if we'll have time today, all the department heads to basically list their number-one priority goal that they've sent to the city manager for this list. And then, we're going to basically homogenize this whole list into ten goals. Now, it might be more if Jim Magan has a sharper pencil and some extra money and that magic money tree or printing press in his office that I haven't seen yet. But, this way, the city can control its expenditure and its budget. And from a chief financial officer's standpoint and a city manager's office, that has to be done. Because the city manager that runs the budget over isn't your city manager for very long. I'd like to keep this job if that's possible. So, we're going to start. And certainly, there'll be questions and there'll be time for the public to offer suggestions or comments on the goals or they have goals. Which is why we have that whiteboard over there and those fancy markers. And we're going to go from there. I thank you. Today's goal-setting meeting... Today's goal-setting meeting is for the purpose of goal-setting meeting today is to identify justified needs of the goal for the betterment of the city. To prioritize supplied goals with importance with a focus on the safety concerns for residents and employees. Safety is a major component. And when it comes to goal-setting, I'm of the belief that safety goals and safety conditions have to be addressed immediately. Not just for the liability standpoint, but for the concerns of people. Because we don't want to see anybody get hurt. Obviously, we care about the residents and we certainly care about our employees. So, we're just trying to address those issues. Also, to achieve the goal and keep our finances in check. I'm going to turn around, I'm going to sit where Steve was. Hang on.
Can you see from there?
Oh, I can make this much easier. Okay. To achieve the goal is to keep our finances in check. Next, please. Our ordering department has supplied the following goals. Long-term debt management program. Jim forecast into the future different goals and the finances of them. Because sometimes, we take long-term bonds, sometimes, we take short. And sometimes, we go out for a major bond and we consolidate some of our debt and some of our loans. The other conditions is surplus policy audit corrective action plan. The state continues to reduce, one, funding, but more importantly, options and requirements for us to put our programs together. We have the checklist that we have to supply each year. If we don't meet those checklist concerns, we lose our grant funding and credits. Asset management plan for our sewer issues. Obviously, this is a long-term goal. Infrastructure for the city of Hackensack in the past has been an issue. And we're obviously trying to meet those demands and start to make direction to address flooding and those conditions. Request for reduce workers' comp, implement safety, training for employees. Training for employees is a major condition. Obviously, the more these people understand the concepts and the issues that we're trying to address, we work smarter, not harder. To improve department training, purchase requisitions, et cetera. Obviously, there's people that don't completely understand how finance is done. Jim spends a lot of time repeating himself, meeting after meeting, over and over. But, it's part of the process that we have to obviously fund our operations, but more importantly, how we track our operation. I've always said this, government only measures what it spends, we never measure what we save. And it's a shame because we only talk about, oh, we spent this for that and that for this. But, we never talk about because of these efforts of either the employees or the people that work here, we saved this amount of money. But, that doesn't get measured, that's the problem. But, that's an issue that I've never been able to correct or make people completely understand. Improve health benefits offering for employees. We spend quite a lot of time addressing health issues. And more importantly, shopping for the best service and the best medical service that we can get to one controller cost. Because obviously, every time I turn around, there seems to be an increase when it comes to medical. Next slide, please. Building Department. Building Department is going to be a major player coming in 2018 and years past. With all the redevelopment that the city has, without these concerns and without the full assistance and fully functional building department, the city of Hackensack will not meet the challenges or needs of the redevelopers, the contractors, the residents of the city and our own operation. Building Department requested create a rent stabilization board. Digitize departmental documents. This is a major component for cities. We have records on top of records. And regrettably, some of these records were required to keep forever. Especially personnel records that involve medical. So, all this takes up space and all of this takes up conditions that we have to maintain. You have to, you just can't leave them in a trailer someplace. You have to keep them because they get wet or damp or mold or whatever. So, obviously, getting the city to start scanning all these documents and putting them into a program that we can recall and we don't have all that storage. It may put some file companies out of business for all those file cabinets, but that would be a beautiful thing if we could get that. Obviously, the next thing is a new building for the building department. Building Department will be moving at some point in time in 2018. So, we have to find a proper space to do that. There are some options that we're looking at, but nothing has been officially done yet. Request for more staff to accommodate redevelopment. That's a nice way of saying he's going to need more inspectors to do this job. Because we're going to have numerous contractors and obviously, the hospital redevelopment, the city, residents who want, you know, to put an addition on or add a rec room or remodel their bathroom or kitchen. We don't want to put these people off for weeks. We want to be accommodating because contractors, once you get them started, you don't want them to wander off because if they do, it'll be a while before they come back. Because there's always somebody else in line for their services. And obviously, computers for staff. Next, please. City Clerk. Addition to file room. We're right back to it. Clerk's office is the secretary to the mayor and council and also the record keeper for the city. So, all our Oprah requests, all that paperwork, all those letters, they are charged with the responsibility, making sure that they can find that documentation and that paperwork and present it when called upon. It's a big job. Codification of the municipal code. This also is an issue that myself and Albert Dibb and our city clerk and our attorney are going to have to address because we need to make sure that we continually update and maintain the municipal code. One, to stay with state regulations and the change of the laws and conduct, but also to make sure that we're spot-on. Because we don't want to enforce something that obviously, we would be challenged or incorrect in the future. Request for third-floor security. We're in a different time and a different world. The city of Hackensack, like the rest of the United States, is going to be challenged by this. And unfortunately, we don't seem to be as safe as we used to, or at least in our minds we're not. So, obviously, a security issue for me is one of those safety concerns, which is something that I'm concerned about. Because obviously, I want to make sure that all the people that are in the city, one, are safe and all these employees come to work and go home to their families at night. Part-time employees, they're looking for additional staff between 12 and 14 hours. Next slide, please. Cultural Arts Department. Cultural Arts may not have been in the forefront in the prior years, but seems to have slid way out in front in 2017 with the soon-open Cultural Arts Center on Atlantic Street. The outdoor park there and the new building, once it will be opened, will certainly be one of the benchmarks for the attraction for people to come to the city. So, the Cultural Arts Department has Atlantic Street Park, summer events, brochures, Zumba, yoga events, Shakespeare in the Park, movies under the stars, mini-concert series, the Gallery Space, Hackensack Meridian Health Theater, family holiday musicals, Pack the House series. They request part-time staff, a fee schedule update, nonprofit organization formation. The city of Hackensack is working with our H-PAC to create a 501(c), so there would be a way to receive donations or for that group to solicit donations. Because obviously, a municipality cannot do that. So, that's one of the reasons why they're looking for a new foundation or a formation of a 501(c). Next, please. Fire Department. Thank you, Chief, for being here. The fire department's replacing the fencing at headquarters and engine number-five apparatus floor. Fire Headquarters Apparatus Floor, floor drains, grates, support structure, side parking lot, repair apparatus bay, accommodate for Engine Five. Request for employee training, EMT level, department manpower increase from 99 to 107. All of these are important issues. And for an organization to be functional, it has to stay current, has to stay well-trained, and has to make sure that they have enough staffing to keep everybody safe. The responsibility now in 2017 is that every time someone from a department comes to me and says, hey, we need more additional officers or we need more staff or we need a secretary of this, under the 2% cap, there is no more up. I don't increase taxes to add staff or do things. I have to, what I refer to as carve-out. I have to pull that money from someplace else. So, in a sense, I play the rob Peter to pay Paul-type situation here because at this point, there is no relief for this. Now, maybe in November, when we get a new governor, there may be some changes to that. But, obviously, the days of just raising taxes to accommodate additional staff no longer can be done unless it was done by referendum. Next slide, please. Health Department. The Health Department, let me start by saying that Susan is now our health officer certified and we congratulate her on her hard work and her efforts. And she runs a good ship and her staff is working hard to keep us all healthy. I went over and got my flu shot, I feel better already. Educating and encouraging the community involvement. There's a big component for this city to outreach to all types and all priorities here in the city. We are a big melting pot. We have a lot of people from different countries and different nations. Some of them are very, very happy to be here and proud and some of them are a little afraid. You know, we had a DACA meeting, which, you know, scares the bejesus out of some of these people. They came to here when they were children and now they say they may send them out. City of Hackensack is trying to resolve those conflicts and to ensure residents that all are welcome. We appreciate our people and the residents of the city. And the Health Department is doing an excellent job of trying to get these people and maintain them as healthy and as safe as they possibly can. Susan's working right now on a health wellness program for employees and the residents. Flu clinic. Soil remediation for the fire department. We have some contamination issues prior to that fire department being built that we're trying to address that's been a problem for a couple of decades, I hear. Update the civic center, long-term goal. Update the civic center's restrooms, long-term goal. Request improved training, residential relationships and improvements. The health life is a good sign for the next exit. So, we are committed to make sure that we achieve those goals. Albert, please. Johnson Park Library. Sharon is here, where are you Sharon? There she is. Hi Sharon. Sharon was kind enough to come today. The library basically is a little autonomous from the city's day-to-day operation in the sense that they're funded through 33 cents on a dollar for the city. So, they report to a different board, not directly to the mayor and council or the city manager. But, I have to say that Sharon does an excellent job with that library. And they have a great staff, they're very accommodating. They sent me some pictures of the trick-or-treat house event. It was packed. So, I basically view the relationship with the library as like one of our first cousins here. We're all family, we just happen to be split out a little bit, but that's okay. The Johnson Park Library wants to add evening hours for children's department, a online payment for late and lost books, formation of discussion groups for FDU, current topics and interests, and installation of a basement sprinkler system. So, knowing these goals, myself and Jim will work with them to try to identify how they can achieve their goals. But, their goals are obviously a component of what the city is trying to do because I think the city, just like the Cultural Arts Center, the library is an enhancement. It may not be a primary function of the city, but certainly, it makes one of these cities better. You see people all the time say, well, why do I live in this town? Well, I live in this town because they have great schools. But then, they always key on something that's always, but they have really good parks. So, they have a really good library, they have a really good program here, or a dog park, or whatever these inducements or enhancements are. These are the things that people, you know, really basically connect with. Next, please. Municipal Court. Additional court dates. Implementation of credit cards. Update video conferencing. I have to say that Liz does not have the easiest job in the world. And coming from a retired policeman, court would be the next stinker in the people like, they don't like to go to court. It's not one of those happy places where most people show up and say, boy, oh, boy, am I glad I had to go to court today. However, it's a necessary function. We need to maintain order. And obviously, having additional court dates because under the fast and speedy trial they're required to move these cases along. We have a new prosecutor, Cruzes, who, Madam Prosecutor is a very nice lady. We've met several times, we're working on issues to resolve this. But, the city of Hackensack has a lot of moving parts. So, we spend quite a lot of time trying to resolve things. And the funny thing about that job is you have to take care of all the little pieces because everybody has a personal interest in their case. So, it's not like you can give a universal, it'll be okay, you 20 people go stand over there. No, no, it's on a case-by-case basis because everybody has their own personal issues. So, this is why having additional court dates would free up the calendar, which she's required to move. Implementation of credit cards. The city doesn't want to have to chase people for money. And unfortunately, people say, I'm going to come to court, I'll pay my fines. They pay one fine and then they wander off. And then, we find them in contempt of court, they issue a warrant form. In the meantime, we don't recover the money. So, some people put them into a collection agency, but we're of the belief now that a credit card system, they can just put it on their credit card before they leave and then, if they default, they can default on the credit card company, not us. So, that would be a prudent thing. I also know that that's one of the concerns that we want to do for people to pay their taxes also. The updated video conferencing is important because this way, we can do it on camera. We don't have to transport prisoners all over the place or make the, the judge turns on his camera. It's almost like FaceTime in a sense. You can look at them, they can see you, he can make his ruling. We don't have the cost, the expense, the danger that of a prisoner escape. It makes it completely fluid and obviously, something that we need to do. So, oops, I didn't shut that off. I'm bad. Sorry. And obviously, promote and train personnel. You'll see later that staff development and training is a big component and is a big component in virtually every department that we have here. Next slide, please. Personnel. Simeon Cammerbatch is here? Oh, Simeon. Simeon is charged with trying to maintain the staff and all the regulations that the city has. And there's many. And unfortunately or fortunately, whether you like civil service or not, they have very select rules that we have to follow. So, under that creation, create a structured program for the department and set standards for personnel attendance, performance and allowable workplace behavior. Obviously, goal-setting is a big issue for us. We're currently rewriting the employee handbook and the rules and regulations for these departments. Can't force rules if they're not enforceable and they're not current. So, we've been working on this for a while, but like I said, there are volumes of little issues and every day, something new comes up and we go, huh, now we got to address that. So, it's a laundry list of things that need to be addressed and done daily. So, we're working on it. And I hope to have some of mine, you'll see them in my goals when we get to the end here. Deputies to assist in training functions. Adequate space to house and update equipment. The Personnel Department starts to take up a lot of room for the same reason I stated before. Files. Especially personnel files because you have to maintain them 100 years. So, it takes a while and the city of Hackensack has 530 current employees. But, that also includes the record-keeping of all employees. Because Simeon gets a bunch of phone calls, probably three, four a week, from retirees who said, what about this or what about that? And I thought I, could you check the file, could you pull this out? And obviously, we have to have access to these. Training for Personnel Department as well as department heads. This is, this is a day-to-day issue where he works with every department head because every department head has issues or their own individual problems that he has to address. And hopefully, they don't get to me. It's not that I'm not interested in addressing those issues, it's time. Time is the thief in the night for me. I've realized that I could keep getting here earlier and earlier, I don't know if that's really going to help. Request structured training program to deputies to assist in the training program. Next slide, please. Police Department. See, look how simple they made this for me. Police Department, they only want three things. They're not cheap things, but they're, there's only three. Police Department wants a new radio system, very, very costly, however. Having the background that I have, very, very important. The police department's radio system has to be spot-on. These officers have to be safe. They have to know that when they key that radio, that help is on the way or whatever direction that they provide. And this is something that we have to do. Because this is a safety issue, this one's going to find its way to the top of the list because it just has to be done. And it candidly, I wish we'd addressed some of that or part of this before my service. In-car video system. Everybody's watching the news, everybody sees these personal cameras, car cameras. The city of Hackensack doesn't have these cameras. So, this is another step that we're going to give a serious look at and then, obviously, the requirement for a police range. For police departments to maintain the standards of their officers and their ability to qualify, they have to have a place for them to facilitate and use a range. City of Hackensack had a range, it's under reconstruction as far as the cleaning of it because of, it's in the Johnson Park. And we'll have to see how we're going to address range qualifications and a place for these officers to qualify for. Next slide, please. Public Works. Public Works is the meat and potatoes of, so to speak, the municipalities because other than the police department and fire department, probably our Public Works gets the most exposure and they do the heavy lifting for virtually all the functions of the city. Lower the department's cost. Obviously, if folks don't know, Jesse Dearmore, our superintendent of Public Works, retired after 29 years, 29, let me identify that, 29 years of service for the city. And served the city well. And we're going to select in time a new DPW superintendent. Right now, we have Joe Aglima and Fred Cole running the show and doing a great job. And they are assisting in restructuring the DPW so we can meet 2018's challenges. So, they're working hard at lowering our overtime and they have. New uniform vendor for the DPW. That's not new uniforms, that's just the person that we service with. Decrease overtime hours, create a education fund, installation of a community garden. Community gardens are something that's really in vogue. I think that they serve communities well. I know that Councilman, Councilwoman Stephanie here is very interested in making community gardens a reality in the city of Hackensack. I applaud her for that initiative. And I think it serves us well because it's also an educational process. We all like fresh vegetables out of a garden. But, we need to share, to teach and train the youth of this community and all communities how to eat healthier and enjoy fresh food. Which seems to be a problem in inner cities. So, the city of Hackensack, not that we're the inner city, certainly wants to help and assist in as much training and forethought as we could. Request employee morale improvements per DM employees for snow season. So, the city of Hackensack is going to address our snow issues. I was kind enough to get some relief from the fire department who's going to assist me in the operations of snow removal in 2000, winter of 17 and 18. We're going to change some of our ordinance. The big thing that I think has been a problem is that the city of Hackensack has not been consistent in its snow removal operations and its enforcement. If you don't have rules you're not going to enforce, don't have them. But, if we're going to have rules, we're going to enforce them. So, we're going to take a very direct approach to snow removal, how we enforce it, the locations where you enforce it. Because you can't enforce it one day and not enforce it the next. So, one of the big benchmarks for us is consistency. Next, please. Project Manager. Wayne has a pretty full plate here. Project Manager, the city of Hackensack is moving in about 40 different directions simultaneously. And Wayne's charge is to make all of those happen. So, Wayne is listed Streetscape, Kirby, Johnson Boat Launch, Johnson Police Rage, Clean Up Vasini Park, Carver Tennis, ADA Walkways, Street Paving, Paving ADA City Parking Lots, Police Roof, that means it leaks, Drainage Sewer Cleaning, PAC Office, Kitchen Equipment Demo, Linden Community Garden, Adoptan Island, which is another new initiative, M&amp;M Senior Entry Beach and Beach Street Traffic Light, Atlantic Street Parking Garage Rehab and Combined Sewer Separation. That should take. Sorry. That should take Wayne at least all of two thousand and eighteen to get all that done, right Wayne? Okay, good. Next slide, please. Recreation. Johnson Park Turf Field, Columbus Playground, Redesign After School Programs, Sponsorship Fundraisers. Request for Recreation Department Staffing, Adult Spor- Sports Program. It's no secret that um law enforcement and, and communities have realized that having structured program for our youth is a, just an absolutely positive step. And we reap the rewards of having stuff, structured programs for these children to be involved in. Hackensack has great programs. Obviously, today at eleven o'clock, we're gonna have the groundbreaking ceremony for the addition to the M and M Building and we're working hard to find places to provide recreation for it. You know, when you, when you're out in some of these other counties, and I've worked in some of them that are close to the Delaware Water Gap where room and space is not such a problem. They have wonderful recreational programs and beautiful fields and beautiful facilities 'cause there's nothing in the way to do that. In a city of this size and, and the issues, it's hard to make all of this work because there's not a lot of available uh land to develop for these functions, so we garner all the little sites that we have and we, we work hard to use those sites. And that's done through the efforts of um Greg Leosie and the people of Recreation and we try to make all of this work. Thank you. Next. Redevelopment. This would be Albert Dibbs mantle here and there's plenty of it. But see, it's gonna be pretty when it's done. See that picture? That's how that's gonna look here pretty soon. Um, formalize office of redevelopment, increase website involvement, downtown arts and creative um placemaking, beautification of Main Street, cross streets, beautification of Anderson Street and Linden Street, downtown public amenities and technology, Johnson Park Greenhouse, Community Gardens, Ordinance Update. There is just unbelievable amount of just coordination of all of this redevelopment and staying focused on what is in play and what is getting done and obviously the management of that. Albert has weekly meetings that we sit down and we basically benchmark through all of the issues that are in play and make sure that we're obviously addressing those needs and progressing. 'Cause obviously, we get many comments from people that say, well, we just got a big hole on Main Street and nothing gets done. There's sometimes legal issues, sometimes there's engineering issues. But the one thing that isn't an issue is a commitment to see these projects get done. Mayor and Council are committed for this redevelopment and make sure that this happens. So I, uh, all I can say is that there's nobody sitting at this council um that's asleep at the switch here are not progressing these things to move forward. It just takes time. And you know, as they say, Rome wasn't built in a day. Well, Hackensack's not gonna be redevelopment in two weeks either, but we are working on it. Next. Tax Assessor. He's hiding behind this bush that I see over there, but he's here. Art is here. And Art is obviously riding herd on our tax assessor because they're gay. It's a big job. And you have to obviously make sure that all of this is properly charged and facilitated. And then obviously, we have to take the, the personal approach to addressing people's concerns or their issues where they felt that they were charged too much. And I welcome those people to come in and complain because maybe they don't understand uh, the, the thing that I realize eighty-five percent of the time, it's either a lack of communications or a misunderstanding that people don't quite understand it. But we do have, and Elise isn't here today, I don't think. Um, but the ladies in the tax collector's office and the folks that are staffed in the tax assessor's office are willing to eh take the time to explain any of these issues to residents. And we do with frequency, but a lot of people just stand up and say, oh, my taxes went up seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and i- it's your fault. And I smile and I say, listen, give me your name and number, we will sit down and explain this whole thing because I don't think they completely understand that the city of Hackensack isn't just raising their taxes. There's the Board of Education and certainly there is the county. So, um, less tax appeals, that's a good goal. Keep real estate tax assessments commensurate with market value. Another great goal. Minimize tax impact increases. You know, a lot of municipalities for some issue aren't willing to increase taxes and they choose not to, so they don't have an eh, a tax increase in two thou- two thousand and sixteen and not one in seventeen and one in eighteen. And I, I, I shake my head when they do that personally because all of a sudden, one of these days, that city's gonna have to raise those taxes. And they're not gonna have to raise them a little bit, gonna have to raise them a lot. So just kinda like walking up a pair of steps, I like gradual increases, so even if we had a really good year, I'd be inclined to put like a two-point tax increase in it and let that money lapse to surplus because there's someday, there's always gonna be a rainy day and that way we don't have to borrow the money to pay for these issues. Let it lapse into surplus and let it follow through. So far, we're doing good. We're, Jim has, you know, returned us to sovereignty because of the tax appeals issues that we've had. Uh, we're not um having to go to the uh local finance board for assistance anymore and the city of Hackensack's starting to get some new, new feet underneath us and we seem to be moving forward. So I, I truly appreciate that and their efforts. Next, please. Tax Collector. Drive-through payment booth. I don't know about that. Um, security, cameras, parking lot, access um for the street. I think that these are important issues. Obviously, the credit card is a big thing, security is a big thing. Um, drive-through payment booth. I don't know about that. Um, next. Um, Councilwoman Von Rutenberg. Develop a working relationship between the city and the Board of Education. Utilize open space with the community garden apartment, uh adopt a spot program, increase community engagement through the city of Hackensack. Like I said, community gardens is an important issue. Next. Councilman Betaglia. Tax relief for residents, develop a working relationship between the city and the Board of Education. Beach and Prospect Traffic Light completed. FAA Flight Pan- Flight Path Issue Resolved. Redevelopment of Incentives. Parking Garage Control Speeding Throughout the City. Tax, I'm sorry, table bumpers. Um, he referred to speed bumps. Uh, sports facility for two thousand and eighteen. PSE and G Improvements to Street Lights. Improve to Infrastructure Sewers, Paving, Safety Issues. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Sims. Maintain, uh Maintenance Schedule for City Flooding Issues. Sewer System Monthly Cleaning Program. Monthly Tree Trimming Schedule. Street Department Corners Painted. New Sports Complex, Ordinance Amendment for Parks to Close at Ten P M. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Canestrino. Financial Stability, Improve City Streets, Sewers, Parks, Recreation, Culture Arts. Mayor LaBross. A Better Relationship Between the City and the HPD. Department Heads' Employees to Understand Council Plan for City. Create an Executive Board for the PAC. Residents to Need to Know What Is Happening in the City, Continue to Work to de- decrease, to decrease litigation in the city. Invest in the city or itself. Focus to Move Green Space to the City, Enhance Parks, Parking. Layout Long-Term Financial Plans, Public Accessibility. Use Website to Cut Back on Open Request. Proper Funding of Departments and Department's Efficiency. Better Communications to Utility Companies. Staffing of our department, of our building department, Accountability Through All City Departments. Work to Lower Our Insurance Cost. City Manager. Be the Example for All Employees to Follow. Be Fair, Be Consistent. Continue to Earn the Trust of the Public and Employees of the City Manager. Support Staff Initiatives, Goals and Training. Complete All Ten Goals Established From the Action of This Meeting for Two Thousand and Eighteen. Establish the One Percent Rule. Every Employee Must Daily Improve the City by One Percent of Their Actions, Care or Concern. This initiative is something that I think is really important. We have five hundred and thirty employees here. If every employee did one thing that improved the city by one percent, that'd be five hundred and thirty percent improvement every day. I won't even take that much, let's just make it for a week. But let's face it. It's hard sometimes in these departments. But there's a way to express yourself, to go out of your way, to take the extra step in time to do so. And I'm gonna start to, to obviously move that initiative along, but more importantly, document it. Because I want people to know that this city is on the move to be better. That we're all gonna work harder to be better. Because one, these people deserve it. They pay taxes and these taxes aren't cheap here. So at this point in time, we need to be better on, on a, on a completely global settlement. Because unfortunately, the service we're supposed to be providing is supposed to be top shelf. And under my plan, that's what they're gonna get, but like I said, if you don't identify this, there are people that do this every day. I know who they are individually, but unfortunately, the mayor and council doesn't know and the public doesn't know. But if you can start to document these things and start to show people, hey, these people really care. This is the reason why people move to these kinda towns. Because the people come out. There's a rhythm, there's a, there's a a complete concept of people saying, you know what? We pay a little more, but we get fantastic service. I want people to come to me and say, you know something? This city provides the best service I've ever gotten. I get it individually, but I, I'd like to hear it every day. And I know this mayor and council love to hear it every day. 'Cause unfortunately, we don't hear so much sometimes. All we hear is, not so good. So we're, we're, we're working hard to get that. So I'm gonna try this because when you think about it, I don't have to pay anything extra, you just have to be a little extra. And there's nothing wrong with that. Um, complete the redraft of the Policies and Procedures for the City by January first, two thousand and eighteen. Complete the redraft of the Employee Handbook by January first, two eighteen. Resolve All Disputes and Legal Actions Filed Against the City in two thousand and eighteen. There is a ton of old history here that has not been addressed and it's my goal to make sure that we now, we're not gonna uh you know, just settle just for the, the point of settling to say that we've uh resolved our conflicts, but I spend a lot of time on old issues here in the city that I think we need to have some closure to. Because I would really like to get to some more positive things and not spend my days fighting battles on things that I candidly, I have a, a, a comment, everybody knows it's coming. BT moment, before Ted. There's a ton of BT stuff here that I'm trying to clean up. Um, it'll help with the city, it'll help with our time management, it'll hurt, it'll help with our insurance rates. And I'm committed to make sure that the city is in the best position it possibly can by the end of two thousand and eighteen. Um, install GPS to all of our city workers. People want transparency. I think we also need documentation. And s- um, lower workers' comp claims by fifty percent by improved safety training and counseling of select staff. I've done this in the past. I've cut um workers' comps uh close to a half a million dollars in communities before. It takes some effort, it takes some commitment of department heads. We all have to work hard together to channel this. But at the end of the day, we need to structure this to make sure that our employees are safe. And I thank you all for this part of it. Um, I guess I'll ask the mayor, do you wanna, comments from the council first and then um, ask questions afterward?
Well. The people first. Why don't we uh, instead of opening the public first, why don't we open to all the department heads and employees that might wanna say something? Then the council, then the people.
Okay, I um, ask.
You guys want light?
That's a scarecrow. He just eh eh eh, it blew off when he was up there, but he, he's good.
Okay. First of all, I wanna thank uh our city manager, Mr. Aaronberg, for putting this together. It's new to all of us. I know it's new to you guys, we've never done this before. And I thank everybody for coming out on a Saturday morning. I'm sure all of us, those sitting up here, those sitting down there, would rather be someplace else than sitting at work on a ten o'clock on a Saturday morning. But that said, uh, we're here. Um, goal setting, I, I believe is very important. I know he's used this technique before and if it's been successful, I'm more than happy to give him my Saturday morning. But uh, if there's anybody from the city, an employee or a department head that would like to get up and speak, we're wondering why there wasn't a section on finance for Mr. Mangan, but.
But he's in order.
Yeah, I just wanna talk about one thing because uh, in terms of goal setting, and Ted and I've talked a lot about goal setting 'cause he's done that at other communities, I've done it at other communities and, and at work. Um, but one of the things that you haven't seen um in, in terms of the goals uh is uh is lower taxes or tax stabilization. And there's a reason for that, you know? If you're watching this, you're probably asking same question I ask all the time, eh, where's the money coming from? You know, and, and I say that all the time. And the reason that you didn't say anything on tax stabilization is because that's not a goal. Uh, we see that as already, as part of our mission. Uh, that's the backdrop that we're working uh a- a- against. We've been working on tax stabilization now for four years, um and we've made a lot of progress, okay? You won't hear as Ted, as Ted said, you won't hear us say we're gonna lower taxes. There's only one way to lower taxes and that's reduce your services. And our plan is to increase services, but at the same time, keep taxes stabilized. How do you do that? Like you do that through what we've been doing over the last four years. Grow new revenue and look for efficiencies where you can. Uh, for example, uh Ted just spoke, the, the last thing he was talking about was, was workers' comp. Uh, workers' comp is an area where we have the potential to save a lot of money. We have. Um, just looking at eh, yesterday, I was looking at Simeon's uh Workers' Comp Report, what we call the Monday Report. Uh, right now, we have three employees out on workers' comp. A year ago, we had eleven, okay? Things like that, you know, eh, there, there are ways that we can do that, alright? So just so you know, the, the, the plan for all of this is to do it um with as much as we can within our existing uh tax structure, within our existing budget. Okay, we won't be looking to raise taxes to do all this. Okay, just wanna make sure you understood that.
Right.
You're real easy to watch this and say, oh my God, this is gonna cost a fortune, you know? Okay?
Thank you. Any other department heads or employees?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Um, the one thing that I wanted to mention because we had a council meeting on Tuesday and um I didn't send the report to the manager about our annual rabies clinic. In the Steve Hackensack, we have an ordinance that all dogs and cats must be licensed and a state ordinance or state law statute that says that dogs and cats must have a current rabies shot. The city offers a yearly free rabies clinic and we all always do it the first Thursday in November, so this year it's Thursday, November second, which is next Thursday, from six to eight at the DPW. You could come and get your license and a free rabies shot on Thursday for city employees, so thank you.
Thank you.
For city residents.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I wasn't planning on speaking, but um I really just, I wanna thank the mayor and council for giving the city manager the green light on this process. Uh, you know, I've been here quite a while, just celebrated my thirty-fourth year here with the city of Hackensack. So I've, you know, I've seen things done for thirty-four years here in a lot of different ways. Um, and as the, the fire chief, I've been nine years as a fire chief, so as department head, I've also seen things done for a lot of different um city managers and, and elected officials. Um, but I really do wanna commend this city manager. Um, as a department head, this is probably the first time that we've had the opportunity to formalize our needs, our concerns, our goals. And um, I think that's, that's good. I think it gives the department heads, you know, a little glimmer of hope that that their goals and their needs will be addressed somewhere down the road. Obviously, we all understand they get prioritized and you can't do everything. But I know, you know, in years past, it, it, you know, I, I jokingly used to say it was uh you know, if you had the, the city manager's ear at the right time, maybe you got what you needed to get done, done. And it really was never a formal process. Uh, not to slam, slam any previous city managers, it just was the way that they worked. And a lot of things got accomplished under them also, but I do, I do welcome and applaud this process and, and I think it's gonna work well for the city of Hackensack, so I wanna thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else? Go to the public first? Do the, alright, do the public. I'm gonna need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rutenberg?
Aye.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Val LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward at this time. You have, uh, give your name and address to the clerk, you have three minutes.
Oh, we have, we have a time limit here?
Yeah.
Oh, great, good morning, everyone, um, Kathleen Salvo, Loretta Street, Hackensack. Um, I think this is a great process, I think it's, um, it's got teeth, to set goals, to prioritize. I wanna say that we have, um, great employees here, I, I call upon them often, and I get good answers and, and good results. Uh, but I'm here today to ask again what I asked Tuesday. The M and M building expansion, I just asked for a professional engineering report, letting us know that what's happening here is, is not, is not gonna jeopardize the safety, because one of the goals is safety, and a professional fire report, giving us an evacuation plan for the building, giving us a specific fire zone. We're putting two hundred people in this location with a hundred parking spaces short, with, with streets that can't accommodate the fire truck, cause the first responder would be engine one from Hudson Street. It would not gonna be able to make the turn if somebody gets hurt. If the buses come and bring children there for, uh, sporting events or for a tournament, and they block the entrance to the building, and there's not a designated fire zone for the fire truck to come, we're putting a lot of people, uh, in jeopardy. I asked this Tuesday, and if the professionals tell us that it's okay to go ahead with this project, then I was, and to be responsible for what happens. So far, the only thing we did was to count cars in the parking lot, that is not a profession, we need egress, we need how to get in and out of the, the location. If they say it's okay, then we'll go ahead with it. It's very contradictory what's happening here, cause you want green space, yet you're covering a hundred percent of land coverage, and safety is our main concern here, and it's not being addressed. And I wish we as professionals will, um, go ahead with this project and make sure that, uh, it's safe. Because I know it's not, but professionals will tell, and when professionals give us, say, okay, and be responsible for the safety of this location, then I, I give it a stamp of approval. But right now, David, you're putting a lot of kids in jeopardy, the safety of a lot, we don't, we're a hundred parking spaces short. So when these people park in front of driveways, when they block the, um, the section where, where the fire truck has to come, um, so I, I'm requesting it again, I, I asked for Tuesday and, and everybody ignored us. So, um, city manager, do I have any answer?
Today's Saturday.
I know, but I asked-
Tuesday's Tuesday.
I asked Tuesday for the same thing, and I didn't-
You think I could get all that done in four days?
Okay, but I need this to be done before we break, we were breaking ground today, which was a big secret until Tuesday night. Uh, Tuesday night was, was said that we're breaking ground today.
I think Deputy Mayor Sims announced way before that.
No, Tuesday he announced that we're breaking ground, that was the first time.
And at the prior meeting to that?
Yeah, well, that's what kinda notices, what kind of transparency is this? This had to be done prior to breaking ground, this is so important. We have, we have a lot of professionals in this room that I need to know, there's, there's an evacuation plan for this, this building, there's a specific fire zone for this building, and that's part of, that's part of the application, and it never was addressed.
Okay, Mrs. Salvo, your three minutes are-
Thank you.
Thank you, though. Next from the public, is there anybody?
Mr. Williams, James Street, Hackensack. I'd like to know one thing here. I asked Mr. Art about my taxes, and he told me how it was done. I wanna know, whenever I go to appeal my taxes, they say you have to go within a five-block area. But, okay, you go with the five-block area, but there's so much work that's done on houses at night and illegally, and when I do compare it with a house, they got three, the house is sold for this amount of money. So I can't get a deduction, but you don't follow up on this, all this illegal work that's being done. And if everybody would pay their little share, I've been charged for twenty years with a finished basement. Guy come in there and look, you don't have a finished basement. And then when I was talking to Art, and I tell, Art tell me how to do it, it doesn't do me any good. And I just don't understand, what is the rules and regulations for doing work? And then you got all these contractors, they, all time and nights, I call the police, I call the city. I'd like to know what is being done about it. Because I don't think it's fair for me. If I gotta pay a lot of money taxes, and somebody put another bedroom in his house, or put a, a apartment in the basement, or when I wanted to go up on my house, I couldn't. Or when you got three stores, basement, it's the first floor, second floor, and the attic. They don't have any fire escapes. And I'm wondering too, with all this building and this stuff here, is this gonna be another, like Patterson? They bought a building for one million, and they can't use it. Len Hurst, and we, you got so many pilot program going. We as a small homeowners gotta pay the taxes. We have to make up for them. I don't understand, and it's kicking me in the behind. And you say for people coming in, you're running all the old residents away. And you say for your kids, my kids won't be able to stay here cause they can't pay the taxes. This is gonna be another New York City, another re- renaissance. And I came out of Harlem, and now Caucasian peoples have moved in. I can't afford to stay in my apartment in, in Harlem. It's the same thing happening in Hackensack, and I just don't think it's fair. But it seemed there's nothing I can do about it, just go along with the program. But when you call the police, they're making noise, playing music at night, they play, got megaphones. What do you need a megaphone in the backyard? And what do they do, the cops respond two or three times, they say they can't do anything? I call the building department, I complain, I file complaints, but they say they have certain rules and regulations. I'm just, it's ridiculous. I'd appreciate if you can address that, sir.
Thank you. I will make some comments on that, though, and any work, uh, and I've asked this in the past, cause you've, you've also brought this up before about illegal work being in the city, it being done in your area. Anytime you have, that you think there's illegal work, I ask that you call our building department, our code enforcement officer, he'll get over there, but if in fact it's illegal, they will be fined. Um, and made to get their permits or, or whatever. Um, we do something called rolling assessments, which you talked about illegal bedrooms, and bedrooms popping up out of nowhere is part of the rolling assessment program, that's one of the benefits of having it, because all of a sudden, those things show up, and then they're taxed on those rooms, number one. But it also pops up that, you know, we, we find out how they manage to sneak in a bedroom without us knowing about it. Um, Patterson, no, no, you know, not to knock Patterson, we're not Patterson, we're not gonna be Patterson, we're gonna be Hackensack, we'll always be Hackensack, we're just gonna be a better Hackensack. Um, the pilot programs you're so worried about, how it's, uh, you know, not helping us. Again, I'll use, uh, eighteen Camden as the example, cause that's one of the better ones. Buildings paying fifty-six thousand dollars a year, we knock it down, in the first year the new building's up, we get seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in taxes. I don't know how anybody would rather have fifty-six thousand a year instead of seven hundred and thirty thousand, but I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um, people using megaphones, I, you know, again, these are individual incidents that I have no control over, this council, you call the cops, I'm sure they respond and, and deal with it. Um, that said, anybody from the council have any comments on this?
I, I would like to offer Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, if you have any issue with the city that is not being addressed, you can certainly bring it to the city manager's office, I'll make sure it gets addressed.
It's not just not being addressed, it's just that, you know, certain rules and regulations that they told me in the building department they have to follow. I didn't know the rules, but I know when I was doing a renovation, when I dug a hole, they told me, oh, you didn't get a permit? And I just see it so much work, that's how I'm waking in the morning time. These illegal contractors, and I called the police the other day for an incident in a handicap parking space. The guy was there, his papers ain't right, and we did not, you seem to find a right in your ticket. And, uh, park handicap, when you go say something, the guy didn't go sit there, cause his papers ain't right. And the police responded when I called them, but they don't know the rules and regulations, they don't-
When, when you say papers, what papers are we talking about? Is documentation or is car papers?
We're gonna have our officer in charge.
Was the car occupied at the time?
Uh, no.
It was parked, correct? And he was issued a summons for parking illegally in a handicap spot? Okay? Um, on Facebook, Mr. Ehrenberg, you saw, we have been citing people with illegal handicap parking placards, and actually seizing the placards. Now, if the car was unoccupied, my officers can't break into the car. They issued him a summons for being parked illegally. Now, any handicap parking summons is a mandatory court appearance. So when he goes in front of Judge Denise and has to show his placard, and it's not valid, he's gonna have a problem.
He did the job, he did what he-
I understand that, but the thing is, I don't, they can't go into the car, if they can't see the number on the placard, they did what they, all they could do at that time, at that moment, I want you to understand that. If someone is making noise, using a bullhorn or a PA system, and my officers come and they shut them down, that's their job, to shut them down, that's what they did. If it continues, then they should be ordered, uh, issued a city ordinance violation for unnecessary noise. How many times have the officers come? Every resident gets a chance. If you were having a party, and the first time the cop showed up and wrote you a ticket, you wouldn't be happy. At least give me a chance to shut off the music. How many times have they gone to the same event over and over again? And they continue, same officer? I'll address it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Art Carlson, tax assessor. We're doing the rolling reassessment, and one of the reasons why we're doing the rolling reassessments is to address the illegal, um, apartments that people do not take permits out or do renovations on their homes. So that's one of the, one of the goals of the rolling reassessment. As far as tax appeals, you have a right to file an appeal every year, but you have to prove value, okay? So you can go to your neighborhood and look at sales and see what the values are. One thing about the city of Hackensack is the, um, assessed values, we're gonna keep updating them every year. And the good thing too is that the value of your property in the city of Hackensack is up about six percent from, uh, a year ago. Okay, I analyze all the sales. So the, your biggest asset is going up in the city of Hackensack, while your taxes are stabilizing. So you have the best of both worlds. Of the seventy municipalities, we started at twenty-five on the average residential. We're down to the, about eight or nine now. In other words, our tax on the average house is about eight thousand dollars. That includes condominiums. So you're getting a good bang for your buck. Again, my office is open, if you wanna have a, a question, you can come talk the pat of your eye, and we'll discuss it. Um, value is value, facts are facts, and the values of the homes and the condos are going up in the city. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good morning, Ernie Cisco, construction official. I'd just like to say that, um, most of the time, if we get complaints about work going on, I'll get one of the inspectors to go out, check it out. If they can't go out, I usually go out myself. And if they have a permit on the property, that gives us all rights to go into that property and see what's going on. If they don't have permits, we cannot just walk into the property, we can knock on the door, but they don't have to let us in. So what happens is we have to go back, send out an interior notice, that takes five days, and then we check out what goes on. I, I wanna say, like, like the police department, if you see something, say something. We will check it out, and we will make sure that everyone has the proper permits for the work. And if they don't, they get fined, it's very simple.
Very good, thank you, Ernie. Anyone else at this time?
Hi, Dave. Morning.
Hi, good morning. I just have a question. Out of all the lists, never was mentioned the dog park at Stipe Park that we have been asking about for years. There was a committee that put a beautiful presentation together, and like, everything else is coming before this Sti- this Stipe Dog Park. We're willing to do fundraisers, ask big companies in town to donate. We're not going anywhere with this.
Right, no, the dog parks, I, go ahead.
I, I just wanna address this. I spoke to, um, former, uh, councilwoman Keeling Geddes just the other day about this. The city of Hackensack, through our grant writer, applied for a grant, we were not awarded that. This hasn't lost off or, you know, got whitewashed. Well, um, obviously, I'm aware of it, because I sat through several of those meetings, and I understand how committed you folks are. As I said before, these are the list of all the goals. I wanna make sure that it was transparent, that everybody in either the city that watches these videos or comes to these meetings knows that. I have not shunned the idea or the concept of the dog park by any stretch of the imagination. Myself, Jim Mangan, and the department heads, and, uh, obviously the input and direction for the mayor and council, we're now gonna distill a list of this. It would be impossible for us, we'd be here till eight o'clock at night, to go through what's in, what's out, what needs to be done. And the other problem is that other than, oh, two departments, I don't have what each individual item would cost or, or what that will take to, to put in place. But I wouldn't worry that you've lost your dog park by any stretch of the imagination, because one, councilman, councilwoman Keeling Geddes is off the council, and two, that the city all of a sudden said, well, that's over with. That's not at all, it's just a question of priority.
We're willing to do things to move it along also.
I-
Cause if you ever visit that part of Stipe Park that we want it, nothing good happens there.
I, I was there-
Drugs, drinking.
Three weeks ago, on, on-
Whatever, it's just not, it's such a great park. And, and Sam, who's here, she goes around in the morning and helps pick up water bottles and, I mean, the, the community keeps that park, well, not only the city, I agree, but it's a neighborhood thing.
Uh, it is, and we were just up there on tree removal for safety, there were a lot of huge trees, and we trimmed all that back, we just had them in there. We just had a, um, a pest control guy for termites for the bathroom up there. Uh, we're gonna engineer to put a new roof on the bathroom, so, like I said, I'm just trying to prioritize. And as I said before, the first issues that I address first are always safety first. I'm not saying that we're not gonna get to it, but like I said, rate the second, that's not my top priority, because as I said in my first twelve months of being here, I now have kind of a lay of the land, I'm gonna address these issues. But please, do not think for thirty seconds that you, you've lost, that this project got shelved, that it's never gonna happen. Like I said, if that funding source had been made available, I would have slid that way up on the list, because now I have funds to at least assist me to do this, because this obviously is not gonna be cheap. Cause these parks cost probably between sixty-five and a hundred thousand dollars, depending on, to what level or degree you take this from.
We want minimum.
I, I understand that.
You know, we're not looking for-
But, but you, you come to council meetings, I see that other lady in the back there who, who is not- Sure, welcome.
Well, you get, you get three minutes each, so we can get to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's alright.
What we really wanted to try to do is get this committee together again. And, cause we've all been talking about, and they're disappointed, the people, you know? We've got a lot of people in town asking about this dog park. So what our idea is, that we wanna try to raise some money. And that's what, and my question to you is, if we can get money together, if we can get organizations, if we can get businesses, local businesses put in, you guys are willing to work with us on that, yeah?
Absolutely, and I would, you know, if you, if you wanna fundraise, feel free to fundraise.
Right, yeah, we're, we're never gonna stop you from raising funds.
But that's, my, my comments are gonna be based basically on finances, and when this was brought to us, it wasn't in this year's budget. So we just can't say, uh, we're gonna come up with-
And, and this is the situation that I have with this committee, cause they're saying, wow, they really disappointed us. And I'm saying, no, they didn't, because they said it depended on money. So if we can get the money together, maybe we can move ahead with this thing.
So Jan is in the audience, hi, Jan. Hold up your hand and wave to everybody. Jan's in the audience, you call Jan, she'll set a meeting, and I'll, I'll meet with you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I, I will say this, this, you, I can pretty much guarantee you there will be a do- dog park in Stipe Park, alright? It will be there, it's just a matter, you know, the one thing I've learned about government, being up here eight, nine years, is it's not the fastest thing in the world, and it takes a little time, but it, it will happen. Um, we'll get the funding together and make it happen. But, uh, like I said, it happened kind of in the middle of the year, all the discussions about it, and, uh, we weren't prepared to fund it at that time, but moving forward, we can plan to fund it, so. But we'd appreciate any help you could have in fundraising, that would be wonderful, thank you.
And today, Albert is working as my scribe, so Albert, can you drag that whiteboard around, and we'll add the input from the public on the whiteboard, please?
Peter's there.
Next, please.
Peter Marcus, Andy, Davis Avenue. It's too mor- too early in the morning to speak, I think, but I had my cup of coffee and my doughnut, so I thank you for that, and I feel oblig- And I feel obligated to say something in response. The first thing I wanna say is that many of you here, uh, I know personally, some of you I know by name only, uh, but it's great to see all of the city heads here, the department heads. I think with the exception of Chief Freeman, uh, who doesn't have anything to worry about in terms of citizen praise, almost all of you here are the victims of critics on the part of the municipality and most of the citizens. There's very little you can do that's gonna please the people, and, and you see a lot of that. Uh, I don't wanna embarrass Jim Magan, but he said at a meeting, I think it was maybe six months ago, that one of the things he enjoys getting up in the morning is the fact that he sees himself as a public servant. And, uh, I think that's a tremendous philosophy to live by. And I know in your hearts, all of you who are here, regardless of the issues that you have day to day with the issues of the city and the people that you supervise, uh, you do see yourselves as, as civil servants, I'm sure. And that's what drives you, I think, to perform, and we're grateful for that. I'm grateful for that. We know it's not a perfect society, but, uh, you do, uh, do a great job on the whole. There's a few other things I wanted to say, and I have to, uh, maybe, maybe turn the tables a little bit in terms of, of finance. Silly little things like, uh, the leaf collection now that's going on. I'm wondering how many bags are still down, uh, at, at the DPW that haven't been picked up, or how much those bags cost. Uh, just a quick thought on this one process, cause it's that time of the year and how we try to save nickels and dimes, you know. Quick nickels are better than slow dollars. What about, we put tags on garbage cans. What about DPW, as they go around, garbage collection? One bag with a flyer stapled to it that says, this is a new process. Go get your bags, you know, just as a symbol, rather than trying to buy bags for everybody, which is kinda silly. You know, 15 bags aren't gonna do anything except cost the city money, and most people are not gonna use them in the way, way intended. Uh, the other thing is, is that a lot of the issues with the leaves have to do with the fact that they're laying in the street, not put there by the residents. They just come off the trees, and those are the ones that are loose. Those are the ones that tend to blow. Residents put leaves in the streets, they pile them up, they tend to mat down. Matter of fact, rain is good because it mats the pile almost immediately, and they don't float to the catch basins. Uh, what are we doing with, uh, contractors, you know, with landscapers, you know, who are piling leaves in the city? Are they now obligated to truck them away? Things like that, I think, that are gonna be major issues downstream. I use that only as an example because I think when it comes to communication, when it comes to newsletters, when it comes to tax bills going out, which is an envelope with postage, stuff something in it. Get your money's worth. Tell people, you know, get on Nixel, you know, sign up for alerts, sign up for email alerts, so that we can effectively communicate better, uh, on the cheap, quite frankly, you know, considering what we're doing now. Would've been a good time too to have at least five or 10 minutes today, since there's nobody here, but we won't go in with three minutes. Thank you, Deb. Have a nice day, everybody, and thanks again for all of our-
Thank you, sir. Peter, uh, Mr. Marcus Andy brings up some great, great points. The leaf program, I've been pushing the leaf program, but I think we need to get the word out better. You know, that Tuesday, we had that little bit of a, a storm with the high winds and a large amount of rain in a small amount of time, and our, our catch basins were packed with leaves, packed with leaves. And the biggest, the biggest thing here isn't, uh, we have to bag them or, or, or anything else. It's, it's killing our sewers, which, when that happens, you know, we end up spending a lot of money to, to clean them out or repair them, and then that increases taxes. So the fact that bagging them long-term, um, will really help the city. And I, I, the council meeting last week, I had mentioned, I go, you know, year, 25 years ago, nobody rec, we didn't recycle. Nobody put, separated their plastics and their, you know, paper and everything. Took us time to learn how to do it, and now we all do it, I hope. And, uh, I'm thinking down the road, hopefully, uh, you know, might take a few years, but the city will get in the process of start bagging. Um, the other point is, I, and we need to, you know, I don't know how it works with contractors with their leaves. If they're doing somebody's house, they, I guess they can put them in the front, cause the person has the right to put them there anyway. But my concern is, all right, if you can't do it in Maywood, but you did five houses in Maywood, now you're in Hackensack. Are you dumping your leaves in Hackensack? Who's, you know, we need to watch that stuff to make sure we're, we're not picking up some other town's leaves. That's a tough thing to, to enforce, I'm sure, but I'm sure, you know, you catch them once, I think they're pretty much done. It's a program I'm gonna keep supporting, and like I said, I will be bagging my leaves. And, uh, to the public out there, please give it a shot. Bags are available. I'm, I'm all in favor of maybe sending a flyer out with a bag if they could drop it off. That's not a bad idea at all. Um, with that, anybody else in the public?
Good morning, everyone. I'm, uh, Greg Leocey, the, uh, the head of the cultural arts department, as well as the acting superintendent of recreation, but I'm also the certified, uh, clean communities coordinator. And I just wanted to mention today, speaking of, uh, clean communities, uh, we have an event, one of our, uh, bi-annual events, uh, going on right now. Uh, it's our cleanup event, uh, where 501(c)(3)'s nonprofit organizations get an opportunity to help the city. Uh, we are going around, uh, we're meeting at Atlantic Street Park. They're meeting there now. We'll be there till 12 o'clock if you'd like to stop by. Um, Clean Communities provides all the safety equipment, all the pickup equipment, all the garbage equipment. We send the 501(c)(3)'s out throughout the city, and they help clean up the parks, uh, streetways, water, mostly the waterways, uh, throughout the city, um, uh, picking up trash and garbage. This is, wasn't on our goals list because it is a grant from the state, uh, that we maintain. But I am proud to say that because of our success with much of our programs, they analyze my reports every year, and for the past two years, our grant has increased, which means that we were able to provide for these 501(c)(3)'s, 501(c)(3)'s was a $300 grant. It's now a $500 grant that we're able to give these individual, uh, organizations that help us out. But we also, uh, in order to maintain my certification, I have to, uh, implement other different programs. And one of the things we found is that the most, one of the things we pick up mostly is, as a resident had said before, is plastic water bottles. Uh, that's mostly what we pick up, and it just, it sort of gets everywhere, uh, in, in brush and everything like that. Uh, so we're trying to do a, a plastic-free campaign where we're encouraging people to be, to be plastic-free and be aware of the plastic they consume. We're working with, uh, in Sarah's supermarkets at ShopRite that last, uh, April, uh, during Earth Week. We're gonna do this again. We provided, uh, a thousand free, uh, reusable tote bags that had our Clean Communities logo on, and for 500 customers, we gave out, uh, free bags. And we're gonna do that again, uh, this year. Again, cause another thing that we pick up a lot of is plastic bags that get into trees, and, uh, we're cleaning that up. And, uh, uh, it's, it really is a team effort between the cultural arts department. But we also use it to be creative with cultural arts in that we had a dance company that, uh, has a program that is about, uh, a, a dance show that is about recycling and the environment, and we were able to help fund that, to bring that to our current cultural center, uh, which we will do again in our new space, uh, to do a presentation for that. Um, we were able to help fund that through Clean Communities. We did the same thing with the cat. Uh, we helped fund the, uh, the, the art box project, and that's because, uh, it was a litter prevention theme, so Clean Communities helped pay for that. Uh, the DPW helps us out. As a matter of fact, I'm borrowing Freddie's truck today. So we throw, we, after, after everybody picks everything up, we go around and throw all the garbage on Freddie's truck and bring it over to DPW. So it really is a team effort, and, and actually, one of those events is going on today. So one of our, our big events is always today, the last Saturday of October. And in April, it's the last Saturday. In April, it wraps up Earth Week. And, uh, we'll be doing more programs with that in the future, so I just wanna let everybody know about that.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
And, uh, at this time, I wanna thank Greg Leocey, cause he's wearing a lot of hats. You can see he's running, you know, this big push for the cultural arts department getting open. It's a tremendous, tremendous amount of work. There's people up here, myself included, have become totally frazzled trying to get this thing open, but, uh, it's happening. It's gonna be a great venue. And, you know, this department has done, kudos to him and his guys, and, uh, plus he's back in recreation, running that program as well. So thank you, Mr. Leocey. Anyone else? Seeing, not motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Need a second? Second for Mrs. Von Ruden, board? All in favor? Bye. Okay?
Works for me.
All right, uh, comments from the council? Stephanie?
Um, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out. Like the city manager said, it's, you know, Saturday morning, 8 o'clock. Um, but I just think it goes to show, just like Mr. Leocey was speaking about teamwork. I've only been in this position for four months, but I feel like I'm part of a team. You know, I look out at different faces and they're, you know, I feel like we all work together. It's a great feeling to be part of, um, the city of Hackensack. There's been many events that I've gone to, and I've seen, um, the different employees of the city attending and, um, being there on their own time. It's just a nice feeling to feel like when you're a resident of Hackensack, that you have the full support of the city employees. And it's a nice feeling. My one goal of community engagement, um, usually see the same faces out here, um, you know, with comments and either support or criticism. Um, but I think we have to get a lot more people in the community involved in, um, positive aspects, positive events. Um, so that was one of my main goals, because I see the city employees there. Um, I see the same faces at different events, but trying to reach out and get more of the, um, community involved is, um, I think a goal that, that is important for, um, a, a city like this. So again, thank you for coming out, um, and I'm honored to be a part of this team.
Thank you, Steph. I wanna thank all of the department heads for, you know, putting their pens, their paper and, and getting the goals in, in a nice concise fashion. It's obvious that a lot of thought went into it. And again, you know, i- it comes from the top, and so we appreciate all the efforts that, that our city manager has done. And he, you know, is rolling out his goals to you, and you're aligning your goals with his. And, and that's exactly the way this process should work. So again, thank you all for participating in this, and again, getting up early Saturday morning and coming here. One of my high-level goals was financial stability, and if you look on the, on the presentation, and there was only two, you know I had to submit a lot more than that. City manager chose to say, you know, make it a little more concise. So I'd like just to just take a very brief moment to, to go through some of the things that I did take the time to put on paper, uh, especially lending towards financial stability. And I agree with what Jim said, you know, financial stability has been a goal of ours, you know, for the past four and a half years, but it continues to be one. And I think that as a council and as department heads and employees in the city, we have to continue to challenge each other year after year, to not let it get stale and not let it get old and say, yeah, we're doing, we are doing great, you know, in controlling our expenditures and bringing more revenue in. We wanna keep doing that. We wanna keep looking year after year on how we can expand in those areas. So just a couple of, a couple of thoughts that I have and things that we have talked about before, and, and while we have all the department heads here as a captive audience, you know. First part, or two main components to financial stability are controlling our expenses and bringing in more revenue, right? That's the way it works, right? So if we can do things cheaper, better, smarter, and in addition, we can bring more money into the city, both of those things work in concert to, to help us remain financially stable. Department heads and managing departments, they have, you know, a lot of things on their plate. You know, they, they have a job every day to get done, and they have to manage to that budget. So, you know, with that in, in mind, the way the budget is set out for the general public to understand is that there's basically two very high-level things. They have their salary and wages that they have to manage, and then they have something else called other expenses. And that's everything else that they incur that doesn't directly relate to salary and wages. So when we look at your, your departmental other expenditures, things I'm gonna ask you to consider going forward is, you, you have two things. You have, that breaks down to you have your recurring costs. So you have things every year you're going to have to, you know, have posted, you have stationary, you have things every year that are gonna become your expenditures. And then you have others that are one-time expenditures that we saw a lot here on the goals. But let's not forget about those recurring fees. And, you know, something I'm gonna challenge all of you with is make sure that you do some comparative pricing. You know, we have approved vendors, you know, you may be using, hey, the same person year after year, but there may be other approved vendors out there that may be a little bit more competitive in their pricing. Challenge yourself and make sure that you take some of that into consideration. And on your non-recurring costs, I think what you've tried to do here is, you know, what's a need and a want? You know, what do I really need versus, hey, this would be nice to have? So, you know, make sure when you're presenting those things to the city manager and asking the council to approve some of these expenditures, that you put a lot of serious thought into, and, you know, sometimes you want. There's things that we want, and they're important as well. But things that we need, and I think the city manager expressed very well, anything that has to do with safety, safety of our employees, safety of our, our public, I mean, these are things that we need absolutely 100% to address. Talking about salary and wages, one of the big things that you as department heads can do to help us is control overtime. You know, and sometimes it's better scheduling, sometimes it's better employee management. You know and you understand your departments very, very well. So we need to look to you folks as, as the best mechanism for how can we do a better job with this? Cause we know that this is an expense to the city that we can try and control better. And this year, for example, in addition to, uh, just doing it from a financial perspective, there was, the, the state comes forward with a best practice checklist, and there were item, there was an item that was new this year that had to do with overtime and comp time for exempt employees. Just to familiarize yourself with, when we have no's on these checklists, there's a, a limit to how many no's we can have. And once we exceed that number, the city starts to lose state funding. So we want as many of those questions, or the 100%, we would love of those questions to have answers to the yes. So I'm sure you're gonna be hearing more about this from our finance officer here, but this is something that, as department heads, we need to be made aware of and make sure that we are complying going forward next year with the, this new best practice thing. Finance department, I'm challenging you with comparative pricing agreements. Let's continue to make that information available to, to our department heads and do the best we can with getting the best bang for our buck. And, uh, you know, looking at revisiting insurances. Insurances are two very expensive things, our health insurance, our general insurance, very high-ticket budget items. And I know, Jim, you're doing a good job looking at this year after year, but we have to continue to, you know, not let up on, on, on those things. City manager, let's, let's continue to explore better shared services, especially with the board of, there was a mention tonight about board of ed, the board of ed and the county. You know, what can we do to expand our shared services to, to again, help control our expenses? Generate, generating more revenue, we've been talking a lot over the years about redevelopment. We will continue to work there, and I think Albert's slide, you know, addressed some of those issues. Medical center, we have meetings going on right now, meetings next week. Continue to work the city with the medical center, uh, to help and look into additional revenue coming into the city. The county, you know, what can we do, you know, not only with shared services, but is there something we can do to help us additionally bring more revenue in? I think we need to review all tax-exempt entities within the city, you know, art. We need to take a, a visit, look at those each and every year. And all city-owned properties. And we, we done, we've done a good survey of documenting all the city-owned properties. I think as a city, we need to continue to look at what's realistic as far as maintaining those city-owned properties, and all are we using them to our best advantage? Because all of this, again, will help us on the revenue side, right? Not to give you any more detail than that, but I think it's important for us to understand from a financial perspective, what we can do, each and every one of us, as we go about it. It may not be, uh, uh, something, a tangible goal that you can say, okay, if I purchase this, I'm gonna accomplish this. But it's something that we wanna incorporate into our day-to-day work and, and day-to-day contribution to the city. And we, as a council, of course, you know, will continue to do those things as well. So again, I thank all the department heads, once again, for doing a great job in the city, and all the city employees, because as Stephanie mentioned, we are a team, and I think we're working well now as a team. And, and that's, I'm very, very encouraged by that. And we continue to look for your support and your good work over the next year. Thank you.
David?
Good morning. I'm gonna thank everyone for coming out. Consistency, what the city manager talked about. Some of the street flooding issues, we have started cleaning them, but we need to be consistent. We don't need, we don't need to do it in August and not do it again till next May. Somehow or another, those streets that flood need to be done once a month. The same with the tree trimming. There are tree limbs that are hanging over signs, street corners. We can just ride down each and every street, get those tree limbs trimmed. Even as Peter said, if you ride in that fairground section, you see way too many tree limbs that have been down for a certain period of time, or grass that has been cut and placed in bags and have been sitting there till they rip open. The street corners, if we can somehow start painting some of these street corners so citizens will be aware that you can't park on these corners or it's within 100 or 50 feet from a stop sign, or 100 feet, they don't quite understand that, or why did I get a ticket? You're a two-parter.
50 feet.
50 feet, too close to the corners. Sports complexes. Miss Albo, we will be- Miss Albo, we will be having a groundbreaking ceremony this morning at 11:00 a.m. as promised, as you were told two council meetings ago. We have never had more than 100 people in any of our organized games ever. You keep throwing this number up, 200.
Capacity is three hundred.
No back and forth.
We've never had that limit.
Go back and forth, please.
We've never had issues with fire trucks going down any of those streets in that area. I don't see an issue now. We have exit signs if there is, God forbid, if there's a fire in the building. There is no kitchen in there, so I don't quite see how a fire could go off in there. The parks, I believe that the parks should be closed at, only during the summer months at 10:00 a.m. Certain parks, the soccer, baseball, they play baseball and soccer up to 11:00 o'clock. And other parks have to be closed at 9:00 o'clock in the summertime, where these kids want to go. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for this beautiful setup, you know, thank you Ted. And it's no question that the only thing we are trying to do is to try to improve the communication between us, put the politics to the side, and just try to improve our city for us, for the residents. And it's no question, like in any city, one of the big problems is taxes. And we should be working together to try to get that relief for our residents. We're not really perfect, and we try to do the best we can, and to try to work in behalf of the residents, program for the kids, recreation facility is something that we got in mind, just to try to have a better community. You know, a secret, I am one of the person that go around, I try to talk sometimes three, four times a week to the city manager to try to improve lighting, speeding problem that we got. I made the suggestion many times to get table bumpers, they call them, they'd be better compared to what they call the speed bumpers. I feel like we need a parking garage to try to help the commercial sectors in the middle of the city. We should be getting a lease for 500 cars. And improvement, the infrastructure has to continue. We continue working with CATTI and question related to the FAA, make sure that they move the flight path over Route 17 instead of to have the planes over the high rises and the medical center. And it's no question that we should improve the relations, working relations with the board of education for in behalf of the kids. And I want to thank everybody for coming today so early, and we should be continuing working the same. And we'd like to see another meeting maybe three, four months from now to try to measure what we accomplished. Thank you everybody for coming.
Thanks, Leo. Again, thanks again for coming, guys.
One second, I forgot one. As everybody noticed, the sent to the city manager that I spoke to him about a few months ago, I think we improved like, what, six railroad crossings?
Five.
Five, okay. And I think the residents enjoying now going over the different streets, nice and easy now. Thank you.
Again, thanks everybody for coming. Deputy mayor just mentioned word teamwork. We're all on the same team, guys, and our goal is to do what's best for the city of Hackensack, whether you're an employee, whether you're, you know, whether you're an elected official, we're all one team. And man at the end is our quarterback, he's our leader. Our form of government, I'm not sure sometimes the employees or the department heads realize our form of government how unique it is. This man runs the whole show. He's the boss, we make policy, he runs the show. We go to him, you know, we go to him when we have issues, he'll address you guys. So it's a pretty good system, that's the way it should work. I'll go through my list real quick and some other things. Better relationship, my number one thing was, this council have a better relationship with the police department, as everybody sitting in this room knows, the police department over the last decade has gone through some pretty rough times, and we want to get that all straightened out. We're working very hard to do that. Number two to me, which really was tied for number one, is the employees overall, but especially department heads, need to understand the plan this council has for the city of Hackensack as far as redevelopment goes. It's new to everybody. It's new to everybody, and, you know, there's laws in place and ordinances from years and years past that might not work and need to be tweaked or changed that are out there. And what I'm asking is anybody, you know, if you have an issue with a business downtown or anything, just go to the city manager before you even approach the guy, so we can work on something, because, you know, nothing's worse than us going and banging up a businessman who's trying to, you know, do something good in the city, and, you know, because he's only going to be on the phone with all his friends. That's what he's going to do. He's been calling the other guys in town, can you believe they're doing this, blah, 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 blah. And just go to Ted. That's all I ask. I talked about our cultural arts department having an executive board. It's critical that we create a board that works in harmony with our cultural arts department. And, you know, we spent a lot of money on this cultural arts building, this PAC, millions of dollars, and it needs to work. We have to push it forward. It's going to work. We got five, this first year is all planned out, so that's, we're in good shape. And it was a heavy lift between, I give Greg a lot of credit, you know, a lot of outside forces pushing and pulling and tugging. It's not easy, but we got it done. And I just got news yesterday from Ernie. Ernie, you still here?
Yep.
Yeah, we got our CO, and that building is, that building is ready to go and for performances, so that, that's the best news I had all weekend. So, very good. We've been very aggressive in trying to make sure our citizens are aware of what's going on in the city, and, you know, I hear that we're not transparent, and it's almost laughable, because I've never seen in four years how a council has taken something that was two or three people to a meeting every week, that's it. I sat here for four years with the last council, guys. Two, three meetings, their meetings were 20 minutes, half hour long, they were done, done, all right? Out of here. We've taken it to first filming them all, putting them on YouTube, then putting them on two different TV channels, then doing the Cal sessions, all right, the 6:30 meetings. Everything is available for everybody to see, all right? And that helps for not just the public, it helps us, because it's a record-keeping device for open requests, which can cut back on that. And I'm going to go right into open requests, it's one of my, wasn't on my list, but it was on my list on how to cut back on open requests, but how many department heads here have to deal with open requests? Raise your hand.
Oh.
All right. It is... That's all I'm going to say about it. You know, and there's, I understand the concept of open request, we'll be open and transparent, but the cost to this particular city, I don't, you know, I don't know about Norwood, New Jersey, but I tell you, Hackensack, New Jersey, we spend about 30% of the clerk's time, the two clerks, on just on open request. Our city attorney spends about 50 hours a month just on open request, plus whatever you guys have to do. It's a tremendous lift, and yes, it's, we have to do it, but we have to become more efficient on how to do that, and we're looking for ways to do that. Well, getting, once we get this stuff online, anything we could put online, we could just tell the people it's online, go get it, all right? And it eliminates all the paperwork and the nonsense. So the more we could put online, that helps us. Continue to work to decrease litigation in the city, you know, for the last decade, again, you know, a lot of it initiated in the PD, unfortunately, but we've had a lot of litigation. We really have to work hard to keeping it down. I said we must continue to invest in the city itself, and what I mean by that is, you know, we're moving, a lot of moving pieces right now. We're selling this piece of property, we're selling that piece of property, we put this up, we need a building department, so we have to buy something. Buying something and putting up a bill department is exactly what I'm talking about. We just can't keep selling everything. We have to put money back into the city for you guys and for the citizens. We need to focus on green space for the city and enhance our older existing parks so that they are utilized to the fullest. Part of that D is a dog park, but all our parks are, we already know the plan for Stuy Park is a dog park. We need, you know, Columbus Park, Plasky Park, all these other smaller parks we need to do work in. We've added splash parks to Carver Park, we've added splash parks to the PoliFly Park. So we need to keep investing in our parks. Comments about taking green space away? You know, yeah, I agree, we lost some green space at the M&amp;M Building, but it was for the betterment, you know, that green space is only good for certain months of the year in a nice weather. The newer building will definitely be 24/7, 365 days a year, so that said, sometimes you give up a little bit of green space, but you know what? There's green space down there that can be utilized more, and that's where we would have to focus some of our funding to fix those up. I put on here parking, enough said, we have to work on parking in the city. We need a long-term plan, possibly some parking decks. Laying out long-term financial plans, this one's for the deputy mayor, she's done a great job along with Jim for our financial plans in the city. We are like spot-on with financing, along with the tax assessor and the tax collector and everything else works hand-in-hand on how money comes into the city. We're really spot-on. The only thing I'd like to see is a plan, a layman's plan or an easy plan for a homeowner to go online to see our financial plan over the next, through the redevelopment period at least, so people can see what to expect, because that holds our feet to the fire when people see what to expect from us, if we put it in writing out there. So some way for them to see that. Everything on the website to cut back on open costs. Make sure all of our departments are funded properly so they can run more efficiently. Sometimes you're going to spend money to save money, sounds crazy, but it's true. Perfect, you know, a lot of different things, we can buy new technologies and stuff, it might cost a little bit more, but the long term, we're going to save money. We need to look at saving money in that way. Utility companies, all right? This has become a real sore spot for me lately. This probably goes more around Wayne and John in the back and some others. We have to get some communication and scheduling done with these utility companies. We can't pave a street on Tuesday and have them come in on Thursday and dig it up because they planned it a year ago and didn't tell us, right? Can't happen. Two weeks ago, we had State Street closed for paving, someone came along and closed Main Street for two blocks. It was, the city was in such gridlock between the pole, public service poles going up on Essex Street, and the water department coming in on the same day to fix a water leak they knew about for three weeks. It crippled the city. And that hurts everybody, because if you're traveling and you're stuck in that, you're from another town, you're saying, I ain't going anywhere near Hackensack, the traffic's ridiculous. And it doesn't have to be like that. With a little bit of work and scheduling, that doesn't have to happen. Number 13, not that that's a bad number, but really should be up to top, staffing in the building department. I see Ernie's here. Yes, we are going to, very important here, because we cannot, as part of redevelopment, we have to be able to service these people properly. We're going to make sure we have enough staff to do that, and with what's going to be coming at the, you know, down the pipe, there's going to be a lot of inspections needed, and we will need staff to do that. Accountability through all city departments, including the city council, everybody in this room should have some accountability, every employee should have accountability. We all should be accountable for our actions. And last but not least, work to lower insurance costs. Our insurance costs in the city are crazy. We pay a lot of money to, again, due to some litigation that went on in the past, and it's very hard to get decent rates because of that, but we're working towards that goal. And you'll see, some lawsuits that are out there right now will be going away in the near future. One just went away, if you've read the paper this week, and we continue to move forward to try to eliminate these things and stop them from happening, and if they do happen, get them out of the way as soon as possible, if need be. That said, I want to thank everybody again, I think this was a great idea, totally new to us, so, you know, and we did it under two hours, so not too bad.
Mayor.
Make sure we can have a little better breakfast.
Mayor, can I say something? And the people have to know, and Ted going to mention about a new company that we got in town that's supposed to help to try to go and do the inspection for the city, and I think they are doing a good job, and I hope we can put SAP, their reports, in the website, the way people got information.
Councilman Tagli, as we're referring to, he went out and expanded our role of engineers for the city, and that guy sitting way in the back there named John Jar, wave your hand, John, who you look like and who you are, is the owner operator and leader of Bright View Engineering. And John has really come to the city fully involved, working hard, doing a great job. He writes a weekly report, and the councilman is referring to, the council is very pleased with this report. I write them also, to be candid. Updating them weekly of my occurrences and what I do, and John has really done a yeoman's job, so I thank John Jar and Bright View Engineering for their assistance. We're going to work to have that posted on the city website, so the residents know the issues that they bring here. The mayor stated before, the policy makers are sitting here, mayor and council. I'm just in charge of facilitating this to take their thought and concept into the action plan and address these things. If anybody knows, and I'm pretty happy to say this, when people bring things to my attention, I move at, at, like most staters, record speed to address these problems, because obviously, I know that there are more coming, but I have to say that I met Mr. Jar when I was in Bloomfield, and he has done a yeoman's job there, and certainly an added resource that the city will utilize. Just want to thank him for one welcome here to the city of Hackensack, and more importantly, thank him for his service. In eight weeks, he has clearly made some differences, and I thank him.
Real quick, before we go any further, M&amp;M Building, as far as fire safety goes, we're taking a building that has minimal fire protection, it was built 40 years ago with actually, I don't believe there's any sprinkler system in that building, but the new system is state-of-the-art fire panels, fire controls, sprinklers, so any fire department, any fire department in the world will tell you a sprinkled building is tremendous improvement over one that's not, all right? And the streets are not changing, the streets are staying the same. But that said, I want to thank everybody for coming and have a wonderful rest of your weekend.
And they invited to go to the...
Yes, we're having, about an hour from now, we're doing a groundbreaking, you're all invited to come to that. Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Motion to close?
motion.
Loca?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, aye.